Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vance, will you call the roll?
Our dream?
Here.
Dalton Bartle?
Here.
Alma Hammond?
Here.
Jerusha Darger?
Here.
John Chatlin?
Here.
Tom Home?
Here.
And Burnham?
Here.
By phone.
Thank you. Seeing all are present, uh, this is a public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone from the public is welcome to speak at this time. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to item number five, which is consideration and possible adoption of financing agreement with Holman Capital for initial payment to PSPRS. Vance?
Hey, as you recall, we've been working on this for quite some time. At the July fifteen meeting, so twenty twenty-four, the actuarial was authorized. At the December meeting in twenty twenty-four, the town council authorized enrollment into PSPRS and directed the staff to arrange for financing the required payment to PSPRS of six hundred and nearly seventy thousand dollars, or nearly, yeah, six hundred and nearly, nearly six hundred and eighty thousand. We went to work looking at the options. Uh, Holman Capital was the only one that even agreed to give us the time of day. And they've got a, a financing package in the packet. And as was reported to the council in prior meetings, as part of my report, we are, uh, using this facility and property as security. They also, uh, the, uh, bank investor is, uh, requiring a two hundred thousand dollar deposit that they will hold for the life of the loan till it's paid off. And...
Does it sit in escrow, or, or is that something that they can do something with it, like invest it or whatever?
It, it sits in escrow. That's what I under, how I understand it.
Is that in Chris Mary?
Not to us. So, um, we, I know these aren't as good as terms as we was hoping for, but with what I'm finding out is, uh, when you talk, talking about, uh, funding pensions, people get really jittery. If you're just funding a building, funding infrastructure, they're a lot more willing. Lots of questions about why we had an unfunded thing. I've probably explained that a dozen times to different people along the way. So, we thought about trying to fund it out of the, uh, risk retention fund entirely and paying it back that way. The problem there is we, uh, get, we, uh, can't do that and stay under our expenditure limitation. By borrowing the funds, paying it that way, we can exclude it from our expenditure limitation. So, we actually looked at that option, but we're too close to our expenditure limitation to do it. And that would penalize us a lot more than what the cost of this financing is gonna be over ten years. So...
Even if you split it and took half out of that and half?
We, the problem is we can't do half. We have to, it's all, it's a hundred percent.
No, I meant just loan half the amount through this bank and half through that?
Uh, we looked at that and we thought about it and it just didn't make sense at the end of the day. And so, what we're asking for here is the approval to approve this financing agreement. And then the next item will be authorizing a loan from the risk management fund to pay that deposit with, so we're not tying up operating funds on that deposit.
The two hundred?
Yeah.
Is, is the reason they want the two hundred thousand is because they don't have confidence we'll make the payments, or what? Why, why are they requiring that?
Uh, as near as I can tell, it just gives them a warm and fuzzy feeling that if for some reason we weren't able to make the payments, they've got something they can hook on to.
So, this six seventy-seven is the, the full amount we need? So, why don't you take the two hundred? Would they drop the amount that they want deposit if you put two hundred out of that and only loan three or four?
We would be starting clear over with the negotiations and we've had those negotiations. It doesn't make that much difference to your finance people.
To your interest.
It's easier to finance a whole amount than it is, in fact, it'd be easier for us if we were financing a larger amount.
Let me, I'm, I'm curious to know.
So, it's kind of counterintuitive on some of that.
If, if we didn't, if we didn't pass this, tell me what the net result of that would be?
Uh, we would be in default with PSPRS on July thirty-first.
What does that mean, though?
I'm not sure what those penalties are, but they do have some, some, uh, it would probably cost us as much or more at the end of the day. We'd still have to pay it. We've already signed the agreement with them. And it would be a pretty
Well, I, I think I-
Pretty poor way to start our relationship with them.
I think I kind of amplify everybody's feelings here is, yeah, we agreed to do this, we agreed to borrow the money. It's the terms of the agreement and the loan agreement that I have a problem with. It's not borrowing money. It's the terms of the agreement that I have a serious problem with. But if you really honestly feel like that's the very best we can do under the circumstances, I mean, it's, you gotta make us feel good about this, Vance.
I understand. I probably won't make you feel good. I might get you to feel okay. When we first started talking with them, they wanted to do a fifteen or twenty-year term because of our cash flow. And I talked them down to the ten-year term, convinced them we could make that payment by showing them we had other loans that we're paying off, we had other things that were happening. And the longer term, of course, would just be a lot more interest over the life of the loan.
So, if you didn't have a fixed rate, does the rate go up?
Uh, rates are, um, an interesting beast. Generally, your rate, and then even this rate, is a prime plus a, a set amount.
Yeah.
A variable rate would be the same. It's like your credit card. My credit card interest's all gone out the last couple of years because the prime rate has gone up. Prime rate comes down, they would come down. Now, this particular loan would not fluctuate. It's as of the date that you sign the loan.
But, but you have to pay every ounce of the interest? So, if you pay it off early, you still pay all the interest?
There is, yeah, the prepayment terms aren't as good as I was hoping. But I don't know that we're gonna get any better.
Yeah, the prepayment terms is to just pay the whole thing, interest and all. It, that's what hurts on these things.
That, that is paying. There, there's really no incentive to pay it off early. There is zero incentive to pay it off early. If you got cash, you're better off to use it somewhere else, 'cause you're not gonna get a big rate on your-
The, the thing that bothers me about this is if, if, if the pension, the money that we have to pay for the pensions for these police officers goes out slower than what the forty-eight thousand a month would accrue in an interest-bearing account that we just put in self-insure, so to speak, where the forty-eight thousand we would just put in an account that it bears interest? And then as those requirements come in to cover pensions, we take it out of the fund that we, it's like a savings account.
The, the challenge is, is that because of the legislative actions and because of some of the past history of PSPRS when it wasn't fully, when it wasn't very well managed at a state level, they, uh, you can't even come into it in a negative number.
How does that break down to a monthly? Is that eighty-five nine thousand a month? What is that?
On which?
On the, uh, the semi-annual payment is forty-eight thousand?
It, the, the monthly amount, I didn't calculate it, 'cause it's irrelevant to me. It's forty-eight thousand and pocket change twice a year.
Well, you know, if we did that, we'd have six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in the, in savings in six years, six and a half years.
Yeah, getting the interest. But then somebody has to manage it, too.
But the problem is you can't, you can't, you can't make payments into PSPRS on the, on this amount. We already explored that. Statutorily, they cannot do it.
So, we just, so the, the terms in here, that we write them in check twice a year?
Right.
For forty-eight thousand, seven hundred?
Do on July, or on January thirty of twenty-six.
Okay.
That's when the first payment.
Plus the two hundred thousand.
Well, the two hundred thousand will, if you approve that next item, will come out of the risk management fund and sit over there. It's not gonna affect our operating capital.
Oh, tell them to let us get the accrued interest on that two hundred by the time you withdraw it.
So, did we kind of jump ahead by jumping into PRS first?
No.
And now we're trying to figure out financing on the backside of it?
No, because we, we, uh, we were kind of up against some deadlines and we, you know, like you say, you know, we've been working this thing for two or three years now with the PSPRS, trying to get to where we were. And we, we didn't know this number until we did the actuarial. Once we did the actuarial, this number was brought to the council. They approved the entry, knowing that we would have to pay it one way or another by July thirty-first. Now, the logistics of all that, yeah, that was a lot of, uh, work that had to be done in the meantime.
Yeah, and, and I assumed that we could qualify for a simple interest, low mortgage, in, low-interest mortgage loan that's just three and a half percent. You know, that's kind of what I thought we could do.
Well, that's kind of, I think, what we were all hoping, but the more I got into it, the more I realized that wasn't gonna happen. Not in the timeframe we had, for sure. And not with our cash flow. We, we operate, our cash flow, you know, when, when people that know financing better than I do, yet that cash flow and that ratio at the end of the day is more important to your credit score. And the city has, even though we're in a net positive cash flow, those ratios are really tight. Now, part of the reason there's a tight is that we've done some huge projects at the airport and other stuff that have used up a lot of our capital. And that's part of what I explained to them is, those are done. We got the, Lexa, one more payment on the dispatch system, then it's done. Other than the ongoing annual costs. And so, yeah, it's just, uh, I, I personally don't think that you're gonna be able to get anything better out in the finance world. Supposing we bite the bullet on this and, uh, planning for the future, which all of us will, most of us will be gone by that time, but planning for the future, is it legal to self-fund a pension plan, pension fund? You'd have to have a hell of a lot more money than we'll ever have.
Well, you got two hundred thousand to start with.
Two hundred thousand's nothing in a pension plan.
I don't think there's, is there any pensions that we're paying out right now?
Right now, what we're doing is we're paying into a four fifty-seven B plan. So, we are paying into a retirement, but it's a defined contribution, which means when you draw it out, when you draw out what's been put in, you're done, it's over. A pension is a defined benefit, and so you pay into it over time. And then when you retire, or you qualify and you retire and you draw it out, you get X amount per month for the rest of your life.
But this is only for the police department, right?
PSPRS is only public se, it's only, even, police and fire. For us, it's only police, 'cause we don't have a fire.
Well, if we started out with the two hundred thousand and then one year from, well, that'd be one year from, uh, January thirty of twenty twenty-six, and you'd have three hundred thousand in the account after one year.
Which, in a pension world, that's not even the time of day. We'd pay how much out?
That's half of six hundred and something thousand. I mean, I don't get it. I mean, it seemed like a pretty substantial chunk of it after only one year.
Well, when you start talking pensions, you get into some very hairy actuariales, 'cause they're guessing and estimating how long people are gonna live, what's the interest, what's the inflation gonna do over their life? All these things, and they want that money needs to pay, is in the plan before they retire. And, yeah, it, if you wanna sit, sit, uh, get your head to swirl, sit through a class on actuariales.
Well, and I don't feel like I'd be doing the, doing my job as a council member to not bitch about the terms of this lease.
Well, I understand that. And I will tell you that the, the, right now, the contribution rate, and I, I can't speak for future years, of course, but for this year, the contribution rate is lower than what we're paying into the four fifty-seven. And the officers that go into PSPRS, we will not be paying into the four fifty-seven. That will only be for the employees that are not in a pension plan.
So, your payment on that end will drop?
Right, right. We, we will no longer contribute in behalf of the officers that are in the pension plan to the four fifty-seven. Their retirement now becomes the defined benefit.
Did we get an appraisal on this building?
No.
We didn't?
They didn't require one, and I didn't offer one.
We're tying up a two, an over two million dollar asset for a six hundred thousand dollar loan with a cut, cutthroat loan and to boot. I mean, it's pretty tough, pretty tough to swallow for me.
But what are some other options to meet the deadline?
As we have other equipment and things, we would've had to pull multiple items together to get, to make up that amount.
They, they wouldn't even, they wouldn't even talk about it using anything that wasn't real estate. This building was the only real estate we had that really would've given that.
In the world of construction, that's my world, uh, running a construction company. If I was to do a loan like this to first cash flow, it would be the stupidest decision I ever made in my business to, to accept a lease like this. Tying up a two million dollar asset and you can't have any kind of early payment incentive, anything.
They know they've got us pushed up against the wall.
This would be one of the, one of the things that could drive a company into bankruptcy. Seriously.
So, who's your bank? Maybe they would love-
Well, banks, banks are probably more in love with construction companies than they are municipalities. That's kind of surprises me, because municipalities always have funds coming in.
A little bit more guaranteed.
There's low risk, you know, when they have a manager like Vance.
Yeah.
They're low risk, you know? But, man, it, to me, everything about this screams huh-uh to me. But yet, that's just me running a construction company, looking at it from that perspective.
One of the challenges that traditional funding has with municipalities is that to do anything that isn't termed a lease requires a vote of the people.
Has to go to the ballot?
Mm-hmm. So, if you wanna do a bond or something like that, it has to go to the ballot. And there's some technical reasons for that in the law. And so, when you took, that's part of why municipal financing is a different beast than commercial.
Yeah.
And-
Hey Vance?
Yes?
You, you said that when it starts contributing to the other plan, uh, to the officers, there's all of this. Do you know what that number amounts to? Eight months or whatever that-
I, I don't know the hard dollar amount, but, but the amount that is budgeted for the four fifty-seven is ten percent. The, uh, contribution rate into PSPRS right now, this year, I think, is eight point six or six point eight on my EBITDA. I don't have that right in front of me, but it's, it is a, considered a quite a bit lower rate.
Some like, can they build that hill off that, that cost up?
Uh, some, but it's pretty insignificant in the big picture.
How, how comfortable are you with being able to stay on top of the payments that are?
As far as staying on top of the payment, that's not even a concern to me. The cash flow's there to do it. It's just-
Well, it's not even the payment Tom's talking about, it's the term.
Right, the payment isn't the issue with Councilman Home, it's the-
It's the term of the loan, right?
Right, the, the lease. It's, 'cause it has to be structured as a lease.
Paying over three years' interest on this.
Okay. Any other discussion?
But you've already said there wasn't any other options, so, right?
Well, I sure couldn't come up with any. We, it wasn't for lack of trying.
Okay. All right, well, we will entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, authorizing a loan from the risk manage, oh, that's not it, is it? Make a motion twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, approving financial agreement with Holman Capital Corporation for funding the initial payment to PSPRS.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With, with a note, a footnote. Can I do a footnote?
Sure.
Are there any opposed?
My footnote would be, it's, it's with having great respect for all my other council members, but we gotta do something. I get it.
But knowing there's no other option.
Yeah.
Knowing that there's no other option on the table and taking Vance's word for it.
Right.
The motion passes. Item number six, consider resolution authorizing the use of the risk management fund for security deposit for PSPRS funding. Vance?
Yeah, I am requesting that the council approve using funds from the risk management fund to put in the two hundred thousand dollar deposit and, uh, rather than using, tying up our operating funds. And the resolution would require that at the end of the loan, those funds would then return back to the risk management fund.
But it's ten years, right?
Yes. And, uh, we'll leave approximately nine hundred thousand in risk management fund, which we're, is above our minimum threshold we've set as a council.
Did you seek for a legal opinion on whether or not that was a smart thing to do with our risk management money?
Uh, the risk management money is something the council can decide and, and, uh, I didn't actually ask our attorney if that was okay, but we've done multiple loans from risk management for internal purposes. And that is a very much an approved use. It, the risk management fund is only restricted by council action, meaning when they set it up, they put restrictions, and then if, a couple of years ago, we amended those to allow for this kind of a use as long as we maintain a minimum eight hundred thousand dollar balance.
Right.
So, we're well within those parameters.
What builds up that risk management money? Is there, is there something that builds it up each year as we spend some of it, or is it just?
Uh, one is we haven't spent much out of it for several years. I can give you a little history on it if you-
I'd really like to hear it. I'd really like to hear it. Might be too late, a little too late, but I'd really like to hear it.
Yeah. On the, the risk management fund was set up when the power, uh, municipal power company was sold. After all the bondholders were satisfied, everybody was happy. The money that was left was allocated between the two cities based on their proportionate share of that system. At that time, we were being kicked out of the pool. We knew we were going to be. We were in the processes of it. And so, the council at that time opted to take that money, which was about four hundred thousand dollars, give or take, set it aside and into a fund to use for legal defense, risk management. We then, over the next few years, we budgeted a hundred thousand a year into that fund for several years. As we got through the lawsuits and stuff, we kept funding that. And in about twenty twenty, we reduced the annual amount to about twenty thousand a year. Now, we're budgeting twelve thousand a year into it.
And is it getting interest?
The interest itself is earning about, just shy of, on an average, of just between twenty-five hundred and three thousand a month interest that's staying in that fund.
How much is that annually?
Just under forty.
Thirty, thirty thousand annually?
About ten thousand a year on interest.
No, if it's three a month, it'd be about thirty-six to forty-
Be somewhere around thirty thousand a year in interest.
Oh, per month, okay.
Yeah. And so, so that's, that's kind of a Reader's Digest version of that fund. And when it was set up, it was set up by council resolution to be used strictly for legal defense. Since then, about four years ago, we approached the council and got permissioned by resolution to be able to use those for internal financing of small amounts, like for vehicles and things. That's what we predominantly used it for. Uh, as long as we maintained a minimum balance of eight hundred thousand in the fund.
Is other towns in Arizona do something similar or something like this, or same thing?
I have no idea.
Is it just something unique to our community? I mean, it sounds like pretty good management policy to me.
Most, uh, communities, well, they have some form of risk management, whether they fund to fund or what, how they do it. It's gonna vary by city a lot. Some cities like Phoenix and Mesa, I think Mesa, or some of them that self-fund. Tucson, I think, self, self-insures. But they're, they're talking budgets with a B in, in their dollars. Most of the cities in Arizona are now part of the risk retention pool, which we are thankfully back in. Is it, uh, would, would it be wisdom, being how we're sucking two hundred grand out of that, would it be wisdom to bump that back up and, and beef that up a little bit? I, I don't think so, because, uh, we're still well within the, the comfort zone of where that fund needs to be. And we don't have any looming big lawsuits or settlements. And we've got stuff still in the mill, but most of that's been covered by the insurance carriers. When we get to the end of the line and we have to decide what our portion of that is, we'll be approaching you for that. At this point, there's no reason to increase. In fact, I debated whether to even budget any into it, but I just felt like it's poor form not to do some.
Yeah.
I agree.
I guess, I guess if you wanna look at it from a perspective of, it was one million, one hundred thousand, right?
It's real close to one point two right now.
Okay, so, so there is enough in there to cash out this lease. Well, maybe a little short of, short of that, but it sure seems to me like that we could've figured out a way to use that money for this.
Well, the, the problem we had with that is that it, uh, would've thrown us way over our expenditure limitation.
What, what expenditure? You're talking about the eight hundred thousand?
No, I am talking about the- Isn't it a federally mandated? It's a, another little history lesson. In seventy-nine, the citizens of the state, through a voter initiative, said, you can only spend your, this amount, whatever it was in seventy-nine, going forward, factored for population and inflation. So, they set a, an expenditure limitation. And that is a product of whatever the economy was in nineteen seventy-nine. Our population count in the census, which ours went down, so that lowered our expenditure limitation significantly. In fact, we're battling with the Auditor General's office right now on what things we can and can't exclude, 'cause- Because in twenty-three and twenty-four, we were right there.
Wasn't it, uh, initially an inflation, inflation control ma-
No, it was a knee-jerk reaction. Yeah, it was because of the high inflation in the late seventies.
Right.
Tripped at Prop thirteen in California, spilled over into Arizona, you might say. About the same time, they passed some others that capped how much you can do on property tax, how much you can increase per any given fiscal year. Uh, and so, we couldn't just, we actually had that, looked at that, but it, we couldn't do that because if you exceed your expenditure limitation, then they withhold the state's shared revenues by depending on how far you went over. And so, the, the penalty for that would be more than we're going to pay total in the interest on this loan.
So, if you loaned out of the risk fund, then you'd get penalized more than?
Right.
More than what we're paying. Yeah, that was-
Because we're so tight to that. And, and we'll be having some more discussion on this because we want to do a base rate adjustment at the next election time. But we have to do that in cor, connection with-
So, it's like if you could loan this six seventy-seven out of that and then make a fifty thousand dollar payment twice a year back into it.
The problem is, we couldn't do that unless we just didn't do anything else, unless we didn't do any roads and laid a bunch of people off to keep our other expenditures down.
Because of penalty, but?
Right.
Yeah.
We just didn't have the wiggle room in our expenditure limitation.
So, if you need money and you, and you spend
Don't try-
carefully and go over, then they're going to take your money from next year.
Correct. That pretty much sums it up.
That's, that's helpful. Okay.
Does that make you feel better, Tom?
I'm just glad we have Vance to just kind of sabble over all our questions and wounds. I really do appreciate you, Vance, but man, we need to, I just cringe at the whole terms of this thing. I really do.
All right, if the council has, is there any other questions or comments? Well, with that, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, authorizing a loan from the Risk Management Fund for security deposit for PSPRS financing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. I'll, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. The motion carries. All right, with that, only thing left on the agenda is an adjournment. It is two thirty-three and we will call this meeting adjourned.